It's time to start our planning board meeting. Everybody ready? Great. So, welcome to the June 17, 2021, meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now called the order. I'm Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Board. We will now start our meeting with a roll call to account for our members. Please say aye when I call your name. Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Panero. Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis. Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Heinel. Mr. Pearllo. Nope, he's absent. And Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari.
Aye.
Mr. Fortus.
Aye.
Mr. Ari. Mr. Ari. Thank you all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I hope that everybody has been able to enjoy this wonderful day. If you're not speaking, if you could remember to mute yourself, that would be great. Ms. Tracy, are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, no changes to the agenda.
Thank you so much. You all received the June 10 email about, excuse me, the June 3 meeting minutes. Did everybody get a chance to take a peek at them? Any changes? Nope. Okay. May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda, we have a presentation by the Baltimore County Department of Public Works and Transportation, led by Mr. Brian Boike, project engineer for Cycle 39 Water Supply and Sewer Master Plan Amendment. Mr. Jeff Perspulso, Design Chief, is also in attendance and here to answer any questions the board may have. Mr. Boike has finished, after he's finished his introduction, I will call for a separate motion to set a public hearing on the subject matter. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Boike to fill us in on the Cycle 39 Water Supply and Sewage Master Plan Amendments.
Good afternoon, everyone. Turn your thumbs up if you can hear me okay. Awesome. Well, like Nancy said, my name is Brian Boike. I work in the Water Design Section for the Department of Public Works and Transportation, and I am here today to present Cycle 39 of the Water Sewer Master Plan Amendments. Just a brief background for anyone who's new to the process. There was an executive order back in 1990 that allowed annual petitions for the Water Sewer Master Plan designations. And if anybody was around, earlier this year, we did have an emergency order that's at the discretion of the county and best interests of the public. And again, all those are listed out in the executive order from April 11, 1990. Next slide, please. So, again, there was a couple of conversations before the meeting started about the crazy housing market up there and how expensive things are getting. But despite the market and, you know, to our department's surprise, we only had one petition this year, and that was one that was actually appeared a few years back, and that is Lafarge Quarry. This will be issue 21-01. The site is located in Middle River. It's about 400 acres bordered to the north by Ebenezer Road and to the south by Route 150 Eastern Ave. Next slide, please. Again, just a little more details on the site. It's the proper address is 633 Earl's Road in Middle River. A portion of the site is inside and a portion is outside the Erdle, and you can see my note here on this slide. The area that the petitioner is requesting is completely inside the Erdle. And also another note that it is inside the metro. Couple other things I want to mention. This area is zoned RC8, which is, forgive me, Resource Conservation Environmental Enhancement Area. And, you know, that'll come into play a little later if Q or somebody from the planning board wants to speak on that. These areas are currently designated W5, 6, and 7, and S5, 6, and 7, and they refer to master planning areas and areas for future consideration. And as you can see on the maps, the petitioner is requesting W3, S3, which would allow them to bring public services to this area. Next slide, please. And this is my final slide here today. I just wanted to kind of give you the Cliff Notes of our 32-page staff report that you should have received before the meeting. This summarizes all the agency recommendations, and I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this earlier. The three agencies that provide recommendations are Department of Public Works and Transportation, Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, and the Planning Department. So, being from the Department of Public Works and Transportation, I will go into a little bit of detail just to give you some background. For the petition to change the water, we recommend approval for this. And this goes back to the, I believe it was 2017, it was Cycle 37. Our department is trying to build a new water line down Ebenezer Road to loop this service here. That'll provide better water quality, and it'll help against main breaks if one did occur in the future. And our Sewer Department's recommendation is to defer to S and Planning for their recommendation. S recommended approval for both water and sewer. I'm not going to speak for their department, but, you know, they're basically for this recommendation because it would help the groundwater and the soil conditions out there if public services were brought out, because right now there's well-inseptic on the few properties that are in this area. And then finally, the Department of Planning recommended no change to both the water and the sewer because the zoning of RC8, this environmental enhancement area. I believe that's all. Quee, do you have anything you want to add? And I'm sorry, and the next slide is just questions. So if we wanted to open up to any questions you have on that staff report, or questions for me or our department, I'd be happy to try to yield.
Thank you, Mr. Boike. Does any of the board have any questions for Mr. Boike?
I do. Are there any other properties in the area that are now not currently served by public water or sewer that would be able to hook up if this extension were done?
Yes, the, forgive me, the bottom left area of this site, just north of the Amtrak, they are well-inseptic just because they would have a very difficult time getting public services underneath that Amtrak line. So, you know, with the potential development of this site, we would most likely be able to pick those folks up.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, can I entertain a motion to set a public hearing?
I'll make the motion. Be it moved that a public hearing be set for Thursday, July 15, 2021, at 5:00 PM regarding the Cycle 39 Water Supply and Sewage Master Plan Amendments.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Tracy. Thank you. Have a good evening. Ms. Tracy will fill us in on the report from the June 10, 2021, meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Committee. Ms. Tracy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. On the subject of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, at the June 10, 2021, meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, the commission voted to issue three certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Stachowski property located at 214 Morris Avenue in Lutherville, the Potry property located at 11903 Woodbury Place in Franklinville, and the Campbell property located at 201 Brandon Road in Rogers Forge. That completes the report.
Thank you so much. Ms. Tracy, now will you fill us in on legislation recently passed by the County Council following our last meeting?
Yes, thank you. So, recent County Council legislation of interest to the board, Bill 838-21, the Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Baltimore County, adoption of the county budget consisting of the current expense budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, the capital budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, and the capital improvement program for fiscal years ending June 30, 2023 through 2027, and appropriate all funds for all program expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Bill 44-21, zoning regulations, multifamily residential uses in the manufacturing light, which is referred to as the ML zone, for the purpose of permitting certain multifamily residential uses in the ML zone under certain circumstances. Bill 45-21, zoning regulations, temporary use trailers for the purpose of permitting the temporary business use of trailers in certain areas throughout the county under certain circumstances. Bill 46-21, zoning regulations, uses permitted residential development proposals adjacent to the Honey Go overlay district for the purpose of authorizing certain development tracks in the business local, which is referred to as BL zone, adjacent to the Honey Go overlay district to be developed with residential uses under certain conditions. Bill 47-21, development review and approval process for the purpose of permitting electronic or hard copy transmittal of certain development documents to certain county officials and community input meeting participants, and generally relating to the development process and modernizing developmental development plans in electronically accessibility formats and means. Bill 5321, restrictions on parking large trucks in designated bike lanes for the purpose of prohibiting the parking of certain large trucks in a manner that blocks or obstructs designated bike lanes. Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 66-21, designation as sustainable community, Arbutus. A resolution to support the designation of the community of Arbutus as a sustainable community pursuant to the Sustainable Community Map and Sustainable Community Plan as further described in the Sustainable Community Application for approval either directly by the Department of Housing and Community Development of the State of Maryland, or through the Smart Growth Subcabinet of the State of Maryland. Resolution 67-21, establishing Honey Go Gateway Commercial Revitalization District. A resolution for the purpose of establishing the Honey Go Gateway Commercial Revitalization District. The County Council has identified the area of land at the intersection of Bel Air Road and Honey Go Boulevard, which is one of the gateways into the Perry Hall area and an area that is in need of assistance to the property owners and businesses in order to stimulate public and private investment and renewed interest from surrounding residents and others in the community. Resolution 71-21, amending the Perry Hall Community Plan. A resolution to amend the Perry Hall Community Plan as amended by Resolutions 61-12, 67-15, and 10-19 to provide further guidance for the development of the Perry Hall community. Amendments include consideration of buffers and new developments as well as traffic signalization details along Honey Go Boulevard. That completes the report.
You're on mute, Nancy.
Ms. Tracy. This is the conclusion of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, any opposed? If not, we're going to immediately go into our public hearing. Pardon? What, Katie?
It's good to hear. If you could hear me, I'll motion.
Oh, I think they already, they did that. I think we're good to go now.
Okay, great. Sorry, it cut off.
That's okay. We're going to reconvene for, we're going to have a public hearing right now because it's two minutes past 5 o'clock. So, at this time, we're going to start our public meeting. Good evening again, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing for the Essex and Dundalk Design Guidelines. The public hearing will be called to order. I'm Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board. We will start with a roll call of our members. When you hear your name, please say aye, and please, if you're not speaking, mute yourself. Thank you. Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Pearllo, I mean, Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Pearllo. Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren. Mr. Caligari.
Aye.
Mr. Fortus.
Aye.
Mr. Ari. Thank you. At the Baltimore County Planning Board Meeting of June 3, 2021, Ms. Hellman, Community Planner of the Eastern Section of Baltimore County Department of Planning, introduced the Essex and Dundalk Design Guidelines. Ms. Hellman is here to further present the Essex and Dundalk Design Guidelines to the board. After each presentation, I will call on those who are registered to testify. Please welcome Ms. Hellman.
Thank you very much. Just share my screen here. All right. Hi, my name's Jessie Hellman. I'm a community planner for the Eastern Sector of Baltimore County, and I'll be presenting on the context and content of the Essex Design Guidelines. So Essex is home to a variety of commercial incentives. These include the Sustainable Community Area Designation, which is a state designation, the Commercial Revitalization District, which is countywide and provides a suite of programming, and the Federal Opportunity Zone, which is Intendispur Private Investment in Distress Communities. In addition to these commercial incentives, we also have the Design Review Panel area. The Design Review Panel is an appointed panel of architects, landscape architects, engineers, and planners who provide a layer of technical review for projects to ensure they meet quality criteria set by the community. They apply to new commercial developments, rehabilitation of vacant or dilapidated commercial properties, additions, and these guidelines are also helpful for planners when reviewing zoning petitions in the area. So Essex already had design guidelines. They were adopted in 1983, so they were a little dated, and the intention with this project was to update those to reflect more contemporary tastes and needs. This project was spearheaded by the Eastern Baltimore County Task Force, which is a committee of the Chesapeake Highway Chamber of Commerce. It's composed of community activists whose grassroots efforts have really improved the business district along Eastern Boulevard especially. They have secured over $800,000 in grants for commercial revitalization and streetscape improvements. They manage a variety of beautification efforts, including storefront facade improvement program, installing planters and landscaping, new banners and light posts like what you see on the right, permanent benches, as well as a number of community cleanups. And they just established an official farmer's market for Essex, which will proceed tomorrow. That began a couple of weeks ago. So with their support, the Planning Department developed an advisory committee of task force members and business and community leaders. We kicked off in December of 2020. We met over the course of five months. There was online engagement and draft reviews to get to what we will review tonight and hopefully adopt. Part of the process was also considering the Commercial Revitalization District boundary and seeing if it made sense to make any expansions to create a more cohesive commercial incentive environment. That was expanded. What you see on the left is the existing Commercial Revitalization District in yellow, and in orange are a couple of small proposed additions. They are a Weiss supermarket center and a few conversion buildings along Old Eastern Avenue. What you see on the right is the Design Review Panel area in green and the proposed expansion of that area so that it aligns directly with the Commercial Revitalization District. So this is the area that the guidelines would pertain to. We kicked things off with a community survey. There was pretty good feedback. 145 people responded. Most were residents of the area. It was online, and the outcome was identifying landscaping and pedestrian accessibility were top priorities. Here are a couple of responses from those surveys. On the left, you'll see that the majority of respondents felt that the corridor currently is focused on passing vehicles rather than pedestrians, and that many people felt the area is currently rundown, and they'd like to see continued momentum to make it more vibrant. So we'll get right into the content now. The first section of the Design Guidelines refers to downtown, which for the purposes of these guidelines is the Eastern Boulevard area. Storefront facades of new or redeveloped buildings should be varied, reflecting the diversity and personality of individual tenants and of the few historic buildings that still exist. They should be open and inviting in their facades. Entrances should be oriented to the street. At the ground level, there should be visual interests for pedestrians. Ground floor openings should align with second floor openings. Storefronts should contain transparent glazing that reveals the activities of the establishment. Building facades are generally meant to align with one another at the point where they meet the ground to create a continuous facade like what you see in the photo. And if roll-down grades are deemed necessary for security reasons, they should be constructed on the interior of the storefront to conceal them during the day so they aren't an eyesore. Signage. So signage for new construction or in large multi-tenant centers should be coordinated to create a consistent style of building identification. They should be proportional and graphically interesting, creative, but also appropriate to the area. They should be designed to maximize, not not to maximize square footage, but instead to enhance their graphic impact to the pedestrian and the driver. We think the Woody's Pub Grab is a good example of that. They should be installed so that they're adaptable and easily repairable as sign needs change. The character should be expressive of the individual owner and the overall community identity. Tenant signage should be integrated within the architectural features of the storefront facade and complement the building's architecture. The signs should be lit to encourage continuous activity within the district while also providing security. They should be made of durable, quality materials and well-maintained. Signs and associated hardware that are no longer in service should be removed in a timely manner, and temporary banner signs are discouraged. With regards to lighting, they should be designed and installed in scale and context with the surrounding architecture. Accent lighting of building entries or features is encouraged. Light sources on private development should complement lighting within the public realm of the district, so public right-of-way lighting, they should be complementary. Lighting as a nighttime amenity should be considered, and accent lighting of trees and artwork should be considered in the public realm as well. And you see some preferred lighting, which is a gooseneck lighting in that photo. Onings. So onings should be constructed of canvas or fire-resistant acrylic materials, so quality materials. They should be permanent and fixed in place. If there are multiple storefronts next to each other with onings, they should be consistent in character, scale, and location like you see in the photo. Onings that are used for signage should locate the signage on the valance, which is the vertical section of the awning, and they should be maintained to appear clean and intact at all times. Infill. So infill development is taking underutilized or vacant areas that were once developed and building within them. Infill is encouraged, but it should maintain the same setback for new buildings as existing adjacent buildings. The placement of new buildings, block and street patterns should connect with existing and proposed streets and circulation patterns. The primary entrance to the building should be from the primary street. So you see here two examples of different types of infill design that are encouraged. Convergence. So conversions are when you take a former residential dwelling and turn it into a commercial building. This is a type of building that is common in the commercial area of Essex. So we created a section specifically for that. Front yard landscaping is encouraged, and additional paving should be avoided, so we like maintaining the front yards. Front porches are also an attractive feature and can be a functional part of the building and should be maintained when practical. Window frames and finishes should be compatible with the colors and textures of the building. We should avoid conflicts in style by putting large commercial windows in residentially scaled buildings. We should retain or install window garden boxes to add interest. Upper-story windows should be considered and treated attractively and certainly not boarded. Sinage should be to scale so that it fits within the image of the building, and entrances should be made ADA accessible in a way that is well-integrated into the building when possible. Temporary signage such as flag signs should be avoided. For new construction, new construction sites should be developed for high-quality mixed use such as residential, office, and entertainment uses mixed with commercial. Building facades should be visually active and scaled through the interaction of the architectural detail, materials, texture, and color like what you see in the picture. Each use with exterior, street-oriented exposure should have an individual public entry from the street. The building should be inviting places that interact with the life of the street. They should line the sidewalk and frame the public realm, so have the same kind of setback that we want for other buildings. Variation in building scaling and detail should relate to the scale and function of the pedestrian activity along the street. New development that is directly next to family and residential communities should New development that is directly next to family and residential communities should respect the scale, form, and development pattern of that community. Building corners should be given special treatment. This may include signature entries, special roof shapes, and iconic architectural elements. And new buildings should be contextual in scale and style to surrounding structures more practical. In terms of materials, brick, stone, metal, and wood are preferred building materials. Buildings should be constructed of durable, sustainable, and low-maintenance materials that can stand the test of time. All facades of a building should be treated equally in terms of materials, color, and design details. The building should have a finished appearance on all sides like what you see in the picture. This is the historic building along Eastern Boulevard. The use of placement materials that imitate or falsely replicate natural applications should be avoided. Reinforcing using natural materials that improve in appearance and character as they age rather than degrade. The use of highly reflective wall materials that generate glare and heat are discouraged. Building materials should be appropriate to the urban context as well. So parking can be an essential element of a successful retail district, but it should be designed in a way that is considerate of aesthetics, pedestrian safety, and the environment. Parking structures should be architecturally integrated with the design and structure of the buildings they serve. Facades on parking structures should be activated with ground floor uses or pedestrian amenities like what you see in this picture. Landscaping walls or fences should be used to screen the view of parked cars and to soften the landscape for pedestrians. Surface parking areas should reflect the character of the district. Parking structures and lots should be adequately signed for easy identification. Crosswalks from parking areas to businesses should be well-marked for pedestrian safety. Establishments are encouraged to share parking when feasible so that parking requirements do not deter future commercial development. Surface parking lots should incorporate canopy trees to the greatest extent possible. Scale of buildings. So new buildings should be contextual in scale and style to the surrounding structures. The location of buildings should define and contain the street or parking area space in order to concentrate and reinforce pedestrian activity like what you see. Architectural massing and site design should be carefully considered to ensure an effective transition between the commercial areas and the contiguous residential community. Gateways and area identification. So this was a fun topic. The task force is actually working on a public gateway sculpture at the corner of Virginia Ave and Eastern Boulevard. So in thinking about the work that is already underway, we discussed how gateway sculptures and art would, it would be great if it reinforced a maritime theme as kind of an identity touchstone for Essex. Public art should be lit so it is visible during day and night. The location of gateway sculptures should not be impeded by utilities, traffic, or or trees. The area around the gateway should be developed as a green space and planted with species that are easy to maintain. Like you can see, the task force has already established in the picture to the right. The sculpture should be placed high enough so that vandalism can be avoided. And continuing that theme, we identified these five nodes as special places along the corridor where public art may be an added benefit and could weave together the area so that there's a continuous theme throughout the commercial corridor. So these are Eastern Boulevard and Mace Avenue, Humboldt Avenue and Old Eastern Avenue, Old Eastern Avenue and Lower Back River Neck Road, Eastern Boulevard and Old Eastern Avenue, and Eastern Boulevard and Middle River Bridge. Again, reinforcing the maritime theme was an emphasis of these guidelines for public art, incorporating the waterfront that is so nearby. Community signage should should pay homage to the waterfront. The design of streetscape furniture, including planters, benches, and transformer boxes should incorporate a maritime theme as a form of beautification. Painted alleys like what you see on the right should consider a waterfront theme if possible. And nautical public art contests, things of that nature that highlight local talent are also encouraged. Environmental sustainability was a big focus. Development should be designed with green standards like LEED. They should incorporate, along the streetscape, we should incorporate canopy trees wherever possible. The pits for new trees should include root barriers to protect utilities. Six feet by 12 feet is the preferred pit size. The street trees should be native and resilient. We included some examples of those species, but alternate species could be appropriate for certain locations. They should be planted in contiguous groupings of three to five trees wherever possible. We went into, you know, caliper size to ensure viability of canopy trees. Stormwater management should be incorporated into all development products to reduce runoff, improve water quality, and increase groundwater recharge. Incorporating stormwater management like bio-retentions and native perennials wherever feasible, such as bumpouts between the sidewalk and the street or within the street and bumpouts are a great way to incorporate green infrastructure into traffic calming measures. And the use of green roofs, cool roofs, and solar panels could also be considered for aesthetic and environmental benefits. Continuing with the streetscape. Well-marked crosswalks where pedestrian access is warranted are encouraged, and this should be done in coordination with Department of Public Works Transportation Division. Developing bike lanes to reduce reliance on vehicular use and slow traffic is desired. The bike lanes should be protected with either spacing from traffic, curbs, ballers, landscaping, or flex flags. Incorporating bumpouts or curb extensions to narrow the street at intersections where pedestrian safety is warranted is encouraged. Installing street furniture in a way that it's grouped. So having benches and trashcans and bicycle racks grouped together, especially on wide sidewalks and around bus shelters, is encouraged. Street furniture should be made of high-quality materials to convey a sense of permanence and security to the area. And creative design of street furniture is encouraged, like the bus stop you see on the right. Providing lighting such as tree lights that create an active evening environment and also foster a sense of safety on the sidewalk are encouraged. And that was the last page of the design guidelines. So with that, I thank you. And here's my contact information. And I turn it back over.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Hellman. At this time, I will call on those of you that have completed the online registration posted on the board's website to speak on this topic. I will call you in order that you register. First, Mr. John Gontrim.
Am I on?
Yes, you are, Mr. Gontrim.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. My name is John Gontrim, and I was a member of the Essex Design Guidelines Advisory Committee. I first would like to thank the Department of Planning, and especially Lori Hay and Jesse Hillman for their hard work on this draft and their ability to coordinate the virtual meetings and keep us all involved. They were wonderful to work with and very responsive to the community members. I've been involved with Essex in the area encompassed by the design guidelines for over 40 years, not only as an attorney, but also as a director and officer of various organizations, including the Essex Renaissance Committee and the Chesapeake Gateway Chamber of Commerce. We are at a time when the community wants to see something happen to revitalize the Eastern Boulevard and Back River Neck Road corridors. Not just words, but action. Community members such as Cliff O'Connell and Sam Weaver have devoted countless hours in cleaning up the neighborhoods and in energizing the community. The Chesapeake Gateway Chamber of Commerce and its executive director, Sharon Keane, have been active in attracting grants from various entities to fix up the streetscape. The current county administration has stepped up in a big way to support these efforts. These design guidelines are another step toward this necessary revitalization. They're meant to encourage redevelopment and investment in the community, the same way that covenants encourage people to buy into a community because there are standards. We believe that these guidelines have the flexibility necessary, not to penalize investors, but to encourage thoughtful new growth. Coupled with other elements of revitalization, we hope that the community, including both business and residential elements, will be encouraged by the adoption of the guidelines to realize that there is a good future for the Eastern Boulevard and Back River Neck corridors. Consequently, I would recommend the adoption of these guidelines and ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gontrim. The next speaker is Sharon Keane.
Design Guidelines.
Sharon.
I was on mute.
Okay, you can start over.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for this opportunity to speak about the Essex Design Guidelines. I'm going to echo some of the things that John just said. I serve as the Executive Director for the Chesapeake Gateway Chamber, but I'm also a project manager for the Eastern Baltimore County Task Force's initiatives. The task force obtained a grant from the state of Maryland to assist businesses with facade improvement, and we were delighted when Baltimore County's Planning Department volunteered to assist us with updating the 1983 guidelines. And it's been a pleasure to work with them throughout this process. One of the big challenges Essex faces is eliminating commercial vacancies and enticing business owners and developers to make investments and improvements to the properties along Eastern Boulevard and Back River Neck Road. We're a business association, and we also deeply care about the quality of life. We want to ensure that the guidelines encourage quality design without becoming so restrictive that they discourage business owners and developers from proceeding. And we believe that this goal was achieved as the resulting document strikes a nice balance between recommending attractive, affordable, and lasting improvements while keeping the recommendations broad enough to allow for creativity and design. We also were very happy with the fact that these guidelines continue to be just that, guidelines, not regulations. This allows for a more collaborative environment between business and government to create what's best for the community. Thirdly, we were pleased that the proposed boundaries better match with those with the commercial revitalization district so that we're sharing a constant message when talking with businesses about county programs and grants that can assist them in making improvements. The Eastern Baltimore County Task Force was very pleased with the final guidelines. They're well-written. The booklet is attractively designed, and we anticipate that the guidelines will be a tremendous help to us as we identify and assist businesses in Essex. We want to thank Lori, Jesse, and the Planning Department staff and all of the members of the advisory committee for dedicating their time to this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keane. For those of you that would like to provide written testimony, you can do so during this hearing. And you can type your comments in the chat box, and it will be read to the board members. So thank you so much. Again, is there any questions from the board for Ms. Hellman? No questions? All right, then, Ms. Hellman, if you would like to present the Dundalk Design
Excuse me. I made the mistake of clicking save. There we go. Okay, here we are. The Dundalk Design Guidelines. Can everyone hear me? Great. So again, I will be presenting the background and content of the Dundalk Design Guidelines. Dundalk is, has a variety of commercial incentives to encourage revitalization in their commercial corridor. There's a sustainable community area designation. They also have the Main Street Program. Their Main Street is on the National Historic Register. They are part of a federal opportunity zone, and they have a commercial revitalization district, all of which is intended to spur revitalization and investment in their commercial corridor. However, they don't have currently a design review panel area, as you can see in this map. One is missing along Dundalk Avenue. So that is what spurred this process of considering what the boundary should be for a design review panel area and the guidelines that would inform it. The Planning Department developed an advisory committee composed of leaders, both business and community leaders in the Dundalk area. We met over the course of five months to develop criteria for the design guidelines. We had a public meeting to get more feedback, and that was reflected in this final draft that we'll review now. The goals were to build upon the existing Main Street facade guidelines. Fortunately, we didn't have to start from scratch thanks to the Dundalk Renaissance Corporation. They have a Main Street facade improvement program and had developed guidelines for that. So we built from that, adding categories of new construction, streetscape, sustainability, and arts and culture. We did consider the boundaries for the commercial revitalization district and the design review panel, which you see here. So the hatched areas are where there is a proposed addition to the commercial revitalization district and a corresponding designer review panel area. They are areas that are newer than the historic Main Street and larger commercial properties for the most part, like what you see here in the Logan Village Shopping Center parking lot. That is where a grocery store used to be, and there is desire for a grocery store to be there once again. So the design guidelines had that in mind. So beginning with the content of these guidelines, the storefront facade section was pulled pretty directly from the Dundalk Renaissance Corporation's draft. The storefront should face the primary street and any primary new or existing open space. It should engage and visually connect the street and other businesses together while providing opportunity for advertising and branding. The facade should be varied as tenants express the character of their own store and building while also maintaining cohesion with the surrounding environment. And you can see a picture here of the historic Main Street in Dundalk. The storefront facade entrance category. So we formatted this in terms of recommended and discouraged criteria with corresponding images to reflect what is recommended and discouraged. It's recommended that the entrance should fit the scale of the architectural framework of historic buildings. Take care to maintain original historic doorways. Locate the door prominently and make it accessible to people of all abilities. Allow for easy viewing into the store, like what you see at the top right. Locate loading and service entrances to the rear or side of the building and locate side entrances as close to the street front as possible. It is discouraged to block entrances with merchandise, like what you see in the lower picture, locating entrances at the rear or side of the building and installing doors of opaque materials such as metal or wood that prevent viewing inside. Display windows should preserve, we should preserve the historic windows of our historic buildings to the greatest extent practicable. Preserve the original size, division, and shape of historic windows. Maintain clean and highly transparent glass, like what you see on the right. It's discouraged to use dark tinted or textured glass, small painted windows, blocking windows with lowered ceilings, or leaving display windows empty or undesigned. And here you can see the display windows are completely covered on the bottom. Storefront facade signs. They should take style and scale of storefront and neighboring buildings into consideration in terms of the scale of the sign. Historic signs should be restored whenever possible. Design lettering and graphics should complement the character of the storefront. Signs should be placed in clear, architecturally-defined areas such as windows, onings, and sign bands. Using blade signs wherever appropriate is encouraged. You can see an example of that in the top right picture. Signs should be made of durable, high-quality materials. They should be illuminated from an external light source. If there is a changeable copy sign, it should be maintained with up-to-date information. And signage should be coordinated in the public right-of-way, if it's in the public right-of-way, with the Department of Public Works. It's discouraged to leave signs dilapidated or non-functional, covering windows with signs that take up more than 15% of available space, obscuring key architectural features with signs, installing internally illuminated or backlit plastic sign boxes, posting excessive temporary signage, like what you see in the bottom right, and leaving temporary signs or posters up for prolonged periods of time. Awnings, it is recommended that awnings be made of canvas and fire-resistant acrylic materials. If utilizing awnings for signage, it should be located on the valance, like you see in the top right, which is the curtain that hangs down from the awning. Awnings should be permanent and fixed in place. They should maintain consistency among awnings on a single building in terms of size, profile, and location. Awnings on multiple storefront buildings should, in the same strip or block, should be, are located within each storefront bay and should be consistent in character, scale, and location. It's discouraged to use vinyl or plastic materials for awning, obscuring important architectural features or other signage with awnings, locating signage or lettering anywhere other than the transom, posting excessive signage or lettering on the awning, like you see in the bottom right, and installing retractable or temporary awnings. Lighting, it's installing lighting that highlights building elements, signs, and other distinctive features is recommended. Lights that are consistent with the architectural style and scale of the storefront. It's recommended to install seasonal and festive lighting, and also take it down when the season is over, using indirect lighting as much as possible, like goose neck lighting, and consider lighting that also eliminates the sidewalk and street for enhanced security, in addition to your standard right-of-way lighting. It's discouraged to install flashing, pulsating, dynamic, or moving lights, lights that glare onto the street, public ways, or onto adjacent properties, leaving seasonal lighting up for prolonged periods, or relying solely on street lighting for your store display, like you can see in the bottom right. In terms of security, we talked about discreet solutions, so utilizing large transparent windows and doors to allow others to visually monitor business safety, installing quality locks, internal alarms, and notification systems, as well as laminated safety glass. If roll-down grates are deemed necessary, they should be built into the interior of the storefront ceiling to conceal them during the day if possible. You could also decorate the grates to reflect the business or identity of Dundalk when they're down. It's discouraged to install fixed solid grates over doors or windows, like what you see in the bottom right, and installing exterior roll-down grates outside the store. Moving on to materials and techniques for renovation and new construction, it's recommended to incorporate energy and resource conservation strategies, like those included in the LEED standards. Using brick, masonry, wood, glass, metal, and stone are recommended. Other materials like clay, stone, or porcelain tiles are encouraged accents. Utilizing appropriate repair and restoration techniques to ensure quality and durability of historic materials is recommended. Keeping original material of historic buildings to the greatest extent practicable, otherwise using materials that are complementary to a building's original makeup or to adjacent buildings. Using materials near sidewalks and entrances that are highly durable and easily maintained, because there's a lot of wear and tear there. And long facades should have a purposeful rhythm or pattern of implicit or explicit bays, window groupings, horizontal material changes, recesses and projections, and similar techniques to break up the scale and mass of long building facades. It's discouraged to properly insulate buildings for energy conservation, to install plywood, concrete block, false brick veneer, vinyl, or aluminum siding. And you can see aluminum siding being removed to reveal the historic brick in the bottom right. Using materials to mimic exterior finished materials or to cover architectural details, and building with brick that clashes with the color and type of original brickwork. With regards to new construction, so new construction really was thinking more about those contemporary properties further south along Dundalk Avenue, where the proposed expansion of the Commercial Revitalization District is. It's recommended to develop for high-quality mixed-use, comprised of commercial, residential, office, and entertainment uses. Planning community plazas, courtyards, patios, and pedestrian walkways on the property wherever appropriate is encouraged. These spaces should be accessible to members of the community, both physically and visually. When a commercial property is located far back from the street, it's encouraged to allow small freestanding establishments, like food trucks and coffee stands, to provide more of a street front presence. If a bus stop along the subject property is present, it should be incorporated with the proposed freestanding establishments. Accommodating pedestrians and bicyclists with site layouts is encouraged. Large blocks or parcels should be broken up into several smaller blocks with new streets, alleys, or mid-block pedestrian and bike connections and pathways, if there's a big redevelopment project. Constructing new buildings on or near the front property lines is encouraged. The front should face and align the street, and define a streetscape and pedestrian zone between the building and the street edge. Incorporating electric vehicle charging stations, as well as solar panels and native landscaping is encouraged. It's discouraged to plan onsite surface parking between the front property line and the building, so having those long setbacks of parking, and then kind of a strip mall, maybe. Developing in an auto-centric way generally, in a way that detracts from pedestrian engagement. Developing with a large setback distance between the storefront and public right-of-way is also discouraged. So, infill generally is encouraged, you know, vacant or underutilized spaces. We do want that to be developed, however, it should be done so in a way that is, that is in line with the scale and setback of the existing buildings. If there are different buildings with setbacks that vary, the new building should align with the storefront that's closest to the front property line to avoid having blank side facades visible to the public. Ensuring that the height and scale of new buildings relates to the height and scale of surrounding buildings is encouraged. This includes the scale of building elements, such as the size of windows and doors. Allowing mixed use in buildings with multiple stories, such as office or residential on the second and third story, is encouraged, and complementing neighboring architectural styles is encouraged. It's discouraged to allow side facades to be visible to Main Street pedestrians, unless it becomes a form of public art in some way, and also disregarding the height and scale of surrounding buildings with a new building, like you can see in that kind of ridiculous image on the bottom right. With regards to identity and culture, it's recommended to accommodate approved murals on blank side and rear walls, like you see on the upper right. Designing new construction buildings with architectural details that add distinction and texture and character to the facade are encouraged. Renovating buildings in a way that maintain existing architectural details is encouraged, as well as hosting approved welcome signs or public art in gateways or public right-of-ways to really foster that sense of place that you're entering the commercial area of Dundalk. It's discouraged to prohibit a mural or artistic distinction on a blank, highly-visible wall. Installing public art in the right-of-way that is vulnerable to damage from vehicles, like what you see on the bottom right, is discouraged. Installing murals and public art that have not gone through a community approval process is discouraged. In terms of streetscape values, so the streetscape refers to the transportation corridor, that is, the street, the sidewalk, and parking areas for the purposes of these guidelines. The spaces should accommodate pedestrians, cycling, and vehicular traffic, but they also serve a venue for many other functions, such as kind of happenstance, social gatherings, landscaping, outdoor dining, and window shopping. The objective of the streetscape guidelines is to foster a public realm that is inviting and enjoyable and safe for all people. With regards to traffic calming, reducing vehicular speeds makes the pedestrian environment feel safer and more inviting. Slower traffic speeds also enable increased driver awareness of retail offerings in the commercial corridor. So, with that in mind, locating crosswalks at all intersections and areas where increased pedestrian convenience is warranted is recommended in coordination with DPW. Utilizing accent pavings, such as brick or earth-toned colored concrete, as well as crosswalk signage to increase the visibility of crosswalks is recommended. And this all must follow federal guidelines. Using bumpouts at intersections and in areas where pedestrian traffic is desirable is recommended. Bumpouts are extensions of the curb that narrow the street to reduce traffic speeds and also the distance that pedestrians have to walk in order to cross the street. Developing protected bike lanes to reduce the need for vehicular use and slow traffic is recommended, and they should be protected from auto traffic with spacing, curbs, ballers, landscaping, or flex flags. It's discouraged to have oversized vehicular lanes, because that increases traffic speeds usually, and maintaining streets with no sidewalk or bicycle lane, also leaving crosswalks that are difficult to see, like what you see in the bottom right picture. With regards to green infrastructure, it's encouraged to incorporate stormwater treatment or decorative landscaping into traffic calming measures. For example, bumpouts can also be rain gardens, like what you see in the picture. You can use native plants or trees to beautify storefronts and break up monotonous sidewalks. Planting native canopy trees in sidewalks and parking lots with adequately-sized pits for healthy growth is encouraged. Street trees should be selected for their upright and transparent habit and their ability to be limbed up to 10 feet high, so as not to block storefront signs. It was expressed as a concern that trees were blocking storefront facades if they're poorly pruned, so they should be well-maintained and pruned. And ensuring planting areas are kept free of trash and debris for functionality and aesthetics. It's discouraged to leave trees unpruned, like you see in the picture to the right, or using exotic or invasive plants for decorative or green infrastructure landscaping, and also failing to properly maintain any landscaping is, of course, discouraged. With regards to street furniture, so that street furniture describes a range of equipment, including cafe seating, trash cans, street lighting, benches, bike racks, and planters. Quality and conformity guidelines for street furniture help maintain a cohesive commercial environment that accommodates different community aesthetics. It's recommended to install street furniture made of high-quality materials that convey a sense of permanence and security. Creative design qualities are encouraged, like what you see on the upper right. Allowing for pedestrian through traffic with cafe seating arrangements in the right-of-way is encouraged. If it's not permanently installed, it should be neatly stacked and stored next to the building when the restaurant is closed. Secure, like, streetlights, public benches, and trashcans to the ground, and ensure that there is uniformity in color palette and material. If a bus stop is present along the subject property, you should group street furniture around it to accommodate travelers and encourage utilization of public transportation. Installing lighting that will create an active evening environment and enhance safety in the commercial environment is encouraged, like tree lights. And this should be done in coordination with DPW. And grouping street furniture for placemaking to accommodate pedestrian traffic, again, that's exemplified in the upper-right picture. Installing bike racks, especially at establishments that have parking lots, is encouraged. It is discouraged to use plastic folding furniture or anything non-durable that appears cheap. Having street furniture that clashes with surrounding furniture and storefronts and utilizing street lighting that renders an unnatural color, such as sodium vapor lamps, like you see on the left-hand side of the bottom-right picture. The last section of the streetscape and of the guidelines is the parking lot. So, although parking lots are an essential part of the commercial environment, they can also create dead space that is underutilized and uninviting. Parking lot design should be aesthetically inviting and promote safe interaction between vehicles, bikes, and pedestrians. In addition, measures should be taken whenever possible to address the environmental degradation caused by large impervious footprints that parking lots are. It's recommended to incorporate green infrastructure, like pervious pavement, solar arrays, and pruned canopy trees and rain gardens, designating electric vehicle charging stations and parking spaces, including pedestrian pathways for safe and easy access from the sidewalk and parked vehicles to the storefront, making existing oversized parking lots available for community events and festivals. So, if you have an underutilized parking lot, making it available for a farmer's market or food truck festivals. Installing bike racks, ensuring there is appropriate lighting for nighttime security, and adding bumpers or ballers in front of the store so that, to put space between people and buildings and vehicles. It's discouraged to prohibit public use of unutilized or underutilized parking lots and to main parking lots devoid of landscaping and environmental considerations and pedestrian pathways, like you see in the bottom right. Also, failing to properly light parking lots for nighttime security is discouraged. And that was the last page of the Design Guidelines, and with that, I thank you and provide my contact information.
Thank you so much again, Ms. Hillman. At this time, I will call on those of you that have completed the online registration posted on the board's website to speak on this topic, in order that you registered. For those of you that wish to provide written testimony during the hearing, you can do so by typing your comments to the host in the chat box. The comments will be read to the board and members during the hearing. Please refer to the on-screen instructions for entering comments and procedures for speaking during the hearing. Speakers, please remember to limit your comments to two minutes or less. And right now, I only have one speaker signed up, and that's with Ms. Amy Menzer.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me? All right. Dundalk Renaissance, for those of you who are unaware, is a 20-year-old community development organization whose mission is to mobilize stakeholders to invest in Dundalk's neighborhoods, economy, and quality of life. I want to thank county planners, Jesse Hillman, Lori Hay, Amy Mante, and everybody who was involved with the Planning Department for initiating the creation of these Design Guidelines. We're grateful that the county administration is interested in improving the aesthetics and conditions in the revitalization, commercial revitalization areas, and it was a pleasure to work with folks on this, so thank you. In 2004, we became a state-designated Main Street area in Dundalk, the first in Baltimore County, and since then, we've engaged in a number of activities in the Main Street to try to bring shoppers to the area, support existing businesses, and grow new businesses here. And part of that was being able to offer, has been being able to offer facade improvement grants, which were funded by the state of Maryland and continue to be funded by the state of Maryland. So, we've been grateful to have that support for businesses and property owners within the Main Street boundary. We've also, you know, we've had Design Guidelines that we developed to go along with that, as Jesse referred to, to incentivize property owners to, you know, use nicer materials, to address things in a way that we want to, you know, that we see as being more consistent with it being a National Register Historic District, et cetera. But there's not a tremendous amount of, there's a limit to what we can do, because, you know, if they aren't using our money, then, you know, they don't need to follow anything, and there's no, there was no oversight, really, from the county level. So, you know, we saw an Art Deco era of building torn down to create more convenient store parking, and... And we saw a brick road shops from the 1930s. That was covered with the sort of ethos material, so that was, you know, unnecessary and unfortunate. And so we're hopeful that the county guidelines can help provide. More of a recognition from property owners that they should be, you know, that somebody's somebody's paying attention and that they should consult the guidelines. And then we can couple that with hopefully some financial incentives when we have them and then also. Now, as was meant as Jesse mentioned, you know, there are parts of the Dundalk Avenue corridor that really. You know, a sort of vacant grocery store in a shopping center that was built for an era when there was a street car going down Dundalk Avenue and every house had. Four or five people in the house instead of one or two people in the house. And so there was, there was a density to support a shopping center and a traffic volume to support that shopping center that. Now we by adding that to the commercial revitalization area and also. Including it in the design guidelines, we just want to help shine a light on that area as a potential for reinvestment and possibly redevelopment. So we hope that the guidelines also encourage that. But similar to what Sharon mentioned in the Essex area, you know, our commercial district is a weak. A relatively weak market, and so we were concerned that the guidelines not create too much of a burden. Or barrier to to new investment in an area that's, you know, that's already struggling to see that that investment happen and we think. That that, you know, what's been prepared in these design guidelines. Really does a good job with striking that balance of, you know, trying to steer and encourage people in the right direction with future investments. But the the guidelines are not too terribly daunting that they're gonna, you know, make, you know, kill some, you know, otherwise great real estate deal that. You know, we don't even know what it is yet, but that, you know, we don't, we don't want to preclude something that we we're not even sure what it is, so. We we feel good about the design guidelines and there was a broad. Spectrum of stakeholders involved in the committee discussions. So a number of neighborhood leaders as well as business owners in. The historic Dundalk Town Center were involved in those discussions, so. So we feel good about these and we encourage you to adopt them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Menzer. Right now, Ms. Tracy, are there any other written comments on this topic?
No, we we do not have any other written comments at this time.
Okay, well, thank you all for all your comments that you've had so far. At this time. Ms. Hellman, we want to thank you again for your two wonderful presentations. You did a very good job. And we're going to adjourn our public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Or is there any questions from the board? No one has any other questions, correct? Nope. Then can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. The board will now reconvene the public meeting immediately. For further discussion on the Essex and Dundalk design guidelines. So everybody on the board, hold tight. When someone will let us know when it's just the planning.
You're good, Nancy, it's a public meeting, you can go right ahead with.
Okay, thank you so much, Crystal. Okay, any comments from the board?
I'm sorry, I I like the balance on both of these better than the Liberty Road one. But I still have the same comment that there's. Very little incentive built into doing this in areas that have very little investment. And I don't know how. Increasing the cost of investment is going to encourage people to. Invest in that. So. I'm still would be a no on both of these for that same reason. But I think this is a much better balance than.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone else?
Nancy?
Yes.
Yes, I I just would my comment would be that I think they they've tried to be as innovative as they can. And reducing. Traffic and its impact on pedestrians and. You know, you've got to have people to be able to walk across the street to get to retail establishments. And you could see in that photograph where there were like six lanes of traffic and a turn lane and a crosswalk. That's that's not a crosswalk, that's a suicide. So I think they've been very innovative with the bump out bump outs and ballers putting in the bike lanes. And, you know, I do think that that's very progressive.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfson. What we're going to do is we're going to go for it with the Essex designs first and then we'll go to the Dundalk next. Does there any further questions on the Essex? Ms. Hellman, would you like to add anything? Now I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex design guidelines.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board recommends the adoption by the County Council of the Essex Design Guidelines. And expansion of the commercial revitalization district and design review panel areas. As submitted by the Department of Planning at the June 3, 2021.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So do I need to take a vote? Okay, all in favor, Mr. Schweitzer is not here, Ms. Panero? Ms. Panero? Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Halipka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis is not here, Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heinel? He's not here, Mr. Pearl is not here, Mr. Warren, no?
Yeah.
Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Panero? Mr. Fortis?
Aye.
Thank you, we have one, two, three, four, five, six in favor. So I believe the motion carries. All right, thank you.
Nancy?
Yes.
Avery, I didn't hear my name, Avery, I mean.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me. Okay, now we'll go on to the Dundalk Design Guidelines. Is there any further discussion at this time on the Dundalk Guidelines? Are there any questions for Mrs. Hellman? Or Ms. Hellman, go ahead? All right, then may I have a motion to approve the Dundalk Design Guidelines?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board recommends the adoption by the County Council of the Dundalk Design Guidelines. And expansion of the commercial revitalization district. And designation of the new design review panel area as submitted by the Department of Planning at the June 3, 2021 meeting.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Todd, you're opposed? I can't hear you, Todd. Okay, you're opposed? All right, just to be on the safe side again, let's take a vote, is Ms. Panero on? Okay, Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Halipka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfson?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. Warren's opposed, Mr. Caligari? Mr. Caligari?
Aye, to her that.
That's okay, thank you. Mr. Fortis?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Thank you so much, motion carries. All right. Well, that's the conclusion of our agenda. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. Motion carries. I miss seeing you all in person and the ones that I haven't met yet, I look forward to meeting you in the future. We greatly thank you for your service and and. Mr. Lafferty and the planning board, thank you for all you do. I work with a lot of these different areas in Baltimore County and and I know you guys are. Are really working very, very hard, so we appreciate it very much. Have a good evening and all enjoy the weather.
Thanks, Nancy.
Take care.